We call the July meeting of the Anderson County Board of Education to order. You'll stand. Vice Chairman Portwood will lead us in our pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. First item on the agenda are some guests that we have tonight from Michael Brady's company. They are doing the Claxton School. They were here Monday night and we got to see this, but we're going to see it again. But we wanted to share this exciting news with everybody else, so.
Good evening. My name is Bill Stevenson. I'm with MBI Companies, an architect and president of MBI. With me is Chris Triko. He's the head of our Civil Engineering Department. And Danielle Hembley, she's caught up in traffic, so she's a little late, so I apologize for that. So talked about the new Claxton Elementary School. So we engaged with Anderson County Director of School Board and several months ago and started a programming phase where we basically sat down and went over all the spaces and areas that we thought a new school, Claxton, would need to be required to have. And so we developed what we call a program, which is a written document, which basically spells out all the spaces, the size of those spaces, what those spaces will contain, what have you, sort of like a menu. So that's the very first phase. We've done that. We've looked at it. They approved that, so we have our list of requirements that we're going forward with. So now we're starting what we call the schematic design phase, which is the very initial drawing phase that we go through. And so where we started with that is, if you could pull up the topo drawing. Real quickly, the existing site.
Sorry, Bill.
Existing site there is an existing church, which is a pre-engineered metal building with a parking lot in front and on the side. And those lines are all contour lines, so those represent elevations of grade. So the site, up to the upper left hand, you can just saw those lines really close together. That indicates a very steep, steep slope. Where the lines are further apart, it's more flat. So where the church sits now in the parking lot, it's kind of a flat shelf on the site. So it slopes down, flat shelf, and then it slopes down again. So our thought was, in order to be as economical and as budget conscious as possible, would to be to build a new school, utilize the existing structure, build a new school on that shelf to help reduce the amount of cut and fill that would be required for that site. So if you'll go to your site plan, Chris. The next one.
This one?
Yes. And so what we've done is we showed the new addition, kind of where the existing church is, our new addition, and how that lays out on that shelf, if you will, to help reduce the amount of grading. Now, the other thing is, we want to access this site off Raccoon Valley. We don't want to come off Clinton Highway just based on safety and traffic. So we're looking to create a new drive off of Raccoon Valley that'll come up through some existing properties and connect to our new school right in there. And that basically represents a 50-foot right away that we would use as access onto our property. So we would come up through there. We would segregate the bus traffic and the car traffic. Right now, the bus traffic would go around the building, loop around, and we're using the existing building would house the new gym, the new cafeteria. So the buses would be able to drop off the kids and they would be able to go directly into either the gym and/or cafeteria area. The cars would split off and go through the front area and drop off there. There's a main corridor that leads vertical north over to the cafeteria, so the kids could come right into the building and go right into the gym or the cafeteria. And we've got some parking. We're still working on the site layout, but that's just kind of the general idea of how we do that. The yellow box is what would constitute a regulation football field, to give you an idea, or a practice field. So we're going to try to work that in there. And then in the lower left hand, we have kind of an area that we will use for detention, where we'll have to hold our stormwater before we release it. Again, this is all very early schematic plans as we go. Can you go to the floor plan really quick? And this is the floor plan. In the upper left-hand corner, that's the existing building. As you can see, that's got the gymnasium and the cafeteria. Now, the way we've designed it is, if you'd like to, you can close off that existing building from the new addition. We've got some doors there that you can seal it off. So in the event you want to have the gym available or the cafeteria available for outside groups or after-hour events, you can utilize that facility without allowing people into the main school. So for secure purposes, you can use that, the purposes we go through there. The way we've kind of divided the school is the lower grades are in the kind of the lower left-hand side, and that'd be the head start, pre-K, first grade, all in that second grade, all in that section. And the upper grades are in the upper right-hand section, third, fourth, and fifth grade, along with the music, art, and the STEM labs in that center corridor. The office administration corridor right in the center, as well as the library right there. That center corridor, where we have the art, music, and STEM labs, would be our shelter area, so a very stout, structurally secure area that all the occupants of the building could occupy in case of a severe weather event. So that houses that, and that would meet the FEMA requirements that we have for that. We do have a stage or a platform, excuse me, in the gym and cafeteria. It would be double-sided, so it basically turns the gym into an auditorium if you want to use it for that. If you have smaller events, you can use the cafeteria side and have an event there. Or you could use either side as a staging area for the other if you have a really big event. So if you have a big band concert, you have several groups that are coming on and off, you can use the cafeteria to help stage those kids as they exit and enter onto the stage. So we do have a couple. Can you go to the rendering folder immediately? Another folder.
This?
Yes. Just click on.
Both of them?
Yeah. And these are very early projections, images that we've done, just giving a general idea of what it might look like. So again, these aren't finalized. There's a lot of decisions that still have to be made, but these are kind of just real quick ideas of how the new school fits with the existing building and how it might sit on the site. So with that, if there's any questions or comments?
Looks great.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Bill and Chris. I see Danielle back there, too. Welcome. Thank you. So we will have an opportunity for the public to see this again at the school, and we're going to show it early and often.
We're going to have the drawings. These two drawings will be at the Anderson County Fair next week, and they will be in the booth at the fair for people to look at.
All right. Next item is persons to be heard. We have two folks who have registered to be heard tonight. I would ask you to come to the podium here, state your name and your relationship to Anderson County Schools. You'll make your comments to me, and stay three minutes. We'll hear you gladly. Thank you.
We're kind of reversing this. I'm Ginger Cook, but thank you for having me. Or I'm glad I'm here. I taught at AC for 12 years and retired in 2019. I loved my students in teaching. Many of these students came from very difficult family backgrounds. Many of them also had to work after school at the local fast food restaurants, and they would often close the restaurants fairly late, around 12 to 1:00 a.m. in the morning. It was hard on them to keep up with schoolwork and hard family lives. Were the students who were there, did we have students that would drift in and out of school? Of course, we didn't. With little family support and lacking any real resources, some students would want to just give up. Who could blame them? We would try and rally behind them just to get over the finish line to graduate. What I find so hard to understand, and I forgot to tell you, I'm here to talk about the controversy at Clinton High School. What I find so hard to understand is why there was not one person to stick up for these educators. The least anyone could do is to go and speak to them for help. In my life, I've had several professions as an executive leader. If there was ever a problem or mistake, I took the fall for my staff. This whole ordeal has exposed a terrible lack of leadership. Finally, I'm so disappointed in your entire lack of judgment and integrity.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and members of the board, and Dr. Director Parrott. My name is Courtney Atneb. I'm here today in support of the Jenkins family, as well as numerous Clinton community members and concerned citizens. Today, I want to shine the light on the lack of rules, regulations, and processes required by the Tennessee State Board of Education regarding our school system's credit recovery program, as well as the lack of training, implementation, required oversight regarding the district's credit recovery program, all of which resulted in unfortunate resignations, suspensions, and dismissals of our community's decorated educators. Anderson County's policy around credit recovery is spelled out in Section 4.210, which I'm sure you all are familiar with. Quote, "The Director of Schools shall ensure that credit recovery facilitators receive training regarding course organization, online instruction management, and related technology." The policy further states that the board shall track enrolled students in credit recovery as directed by the Tennessee Board of Education. Mr. Chairman, members, and Dr. Parrott, you are all charged with overseeing this program at Clinton High School. There was no curriculum or policy for training, implementing, or monitoring the district's credit recovery program by the board. There were no standards, guidelines, or policies for the application, implementation, or monitoring of the ingenuity program by this board. There were no standards, guidelines, or policies for monitoring the students or their grades by this board. Instead of taking responsibility for your misguided and confused process of discovering your lack of oversight, your leadership deflected its failures towards our community's educators. Your failure to lead the school resulted in community educators leaving Clinton High School and being transferred and tarnishing that school's reputation. Today, Dr. Parrott never implemented any program policies or procedures limiting the use of the program in any way. His failures and failure to take responsibility resulted in suspicion and retaliation against teachers who supposedly didn't follow the district's policies and rules that don't even exist. Today, the community is requesting a full investigation of this school system, its lack of oversight, and failure to implement state-required policies and procedures related to the credit recovery program. We call on the Comptroller of the Treasury, the Tennessee Bureau of Investigation, the Department of Education, the Attorney General to investigate this school board and Director Parrott regarding the failures to monitor and oversee this credit recovery program, as well as the failures to admit its own transgressions and its spineless attempt to shift blame onto the hard-working, dedicated teachers and counselors in this school.
Well, thank you. We appreciate those comments. As difficult as they are to hear, we appreciate you coming before us tonight. Next item is the approval of the agenda.
So moved, Mr. Chairman. Second.
The only thing I would ask is, there was an item left off of the consent agenda, and that was what we talked about Monday night, the Norris sidewalk. That's adding that, moving that sidewalk back. So we'll add that to the consent agenda. So is that okay with your?
Yes.
Is there a second?
We're doing the agenda, not the consent.
Yes, I'm approving the agenda, but we're adding that to the consent agenda. So that's, we have a motion to approve the agenda as amended. Is there a second?
Second.
All right. Any discussion? Not all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. That is done. The next item is the consent agenda. It contains the meetings from the last meeting, the human resources report, field trips, the sports schedules, and also the report we got concerning the Norris sidewalk. Any of those items need to be removed for discussion? Not, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. That is done. There was one item on the executive approval. That was an invoice from the Clinton High School football team that was made without authorization, and so we have paid that out of an undesigned fund. So we have approved that. Is there a motion that you, that we pay that invoice?
I make a motion that we approve the executive approval.
Second.
All right. Motion to approve the executive approval. Any discussion? Not all in favor, say aye. Opposed, no. That is done. Next item, comments from the chair. Just want to announce that there are, I think, five of us going, will be attending the Summer Law Institute next week. We do have, as board members, continuing education requirements, and so we are very good about doing that. The next item, I just want to clarify some facts about the Open Meetings Act or the Sunshine Law. There are two parts of this act I want to address. One has to do with meeting notification prior to the meeting, and the other has to do with persons being heard at meetings. We, as a public body, are required to post notice of our meetings at least 48 hours in advance. We do that at least three business days, 72 hours, prior to the meeting. Not only do we give notice of our meetings, but we also publish our agenda prior to the meeting, so people will know exactly what we're going to be discussing at the meeting. This serves two purposes. It keeps our board from trying to sneak an item onto an agenda without letting the public know, which of course violates the law, and it keeps a group of people from showing up at a meeting and requesting the board to take action on an item not on the agenda. Only in rare circumstances do we add items to the agenda once it is set. These are always non-controversial, usually budget items, and a majority vote is required to do so in accordance with our policy. The law requires the governing body to take all practical steps to ensure that opposing viewpoints are represented fairly. Posting our agenda in advance fulfills this portion of the law. The law does give leeway for each board to set parameters around the public appearing before the board. The law requires us to set aside time for the public to speak on items which are on the agenda, but we have chosen to also allow the public to speak on items not on the agenda. We ask people, in either case, to let us know at least a week in advance if they want to speak, and to let us know the topic about which they would like to speak. We have also set a three-minute limit on speakers and a 15-minute total time for all speakers. Letting us know in advance of the meeting ensures we don't overfill that time slot. The total time is limited because we have other items on the agenda which we need to address and for which we have often invited people to speak. It's not good use of our time to discuss items not on the agenda and on which we cannot vote when we have other business to attend to. The persons to be heard section of the agenda is just that, a time to be heard. It is not a time for public debate or for public questions and answers, only a time to be heard. We may, however, refer an item to our workshop for further discussion. Since our last meeting, we have taken some action to make our procedures for speaking before the board more readily available. These procedures are now more prominently posted on the school website. This is not a change in policy, but just a change in how we communicate that policy. It was reported by at least one media outlet that people were not allowed to speak at our last meeting. That is not true. No one requested to speak prior to the meeting in advance, in according to our policy, and no one even requested to speak during our meeting, which of course would have violated our policy. Further, it was reported we ended our meeting abruptly, implying we were trying to keep people from speaking. Again, this is not true. We had a short agenda. We covered every item on that agenda. It was a short meeting, but it did not end abruptly or any earlier than necessary. Our meetings are recorded and posted on the ACTV website, so feel free to watch it and judge for yourself. As Chair, I take great pride in running our meetings in accordance with the law and take offense when it is suggested I or any member of this board does otherwise. If anyone has any questions about how our meetings are conducted, I suggest you contact me or contact Dr. Parrott. Thank you. That is all I have to say. We will move on then to, our student board members are not here, we'll move on to the director's report.
Thank you, Chairman. Tonight, I want to give an update on the Clinton High School situation. From the moment I was made aware of the possible discrepancies through the juvenile court, our focus of Clinton High School has been on the seniors and how it affects them. We want to make sure in doing this that it never happens again. Anderson County School's motto is "Every Student, Every Day," and in this situation, we do not live up to it. As the Director of Schools, I share in this plane. I am ultimately responsible for the students, the employees, and our school system, as you have stated. But I cannot be everywhere, all at once, every day. That means I have to trust our principals and administrators to make the right decisions. I've spent the last 30 years dedicating my life to Anderson County Schools, and I certainly don't plan to stop anytime soon. Because there has been so much misinformation floating around this situation, I want to take some time tonight before the board and our community to set the record straight. As you know, there's still an ongoing criminal investigation, so I cannot comment on that. But I will go through what my team did and the process during that from beginning to end. And this is the timeline. On January the 11th, the Director of Student Services, Paul Sellers, reported to Assistant Director of Schools, Greg Deal, that juvenile court was upset and wanted Anderson County Schools' explanation on why a juvenile that was in court told a judge that he had graduated from Clinton High School, yet Ms. Sellers had submitted documentation indicating the same student was still enrolled at Clinton High School. Assistant Director told Ms. Sellers to call Mr. Dan Jenkins, Principal of Clinton High School, and have him come to the next court date and provide an explanation for the court. Mr. Jenkins later sent Assistant Principal Nate Martin in his place. On January the 7th, 2024, March the 7th, sorry about that, the Director of Secondary Education, Susie Schmidt, and Testing Coordinator, Andrew Russell, met with the Director of Schools, me, and told me the number of students at Clinton High School had somehow not taken the end-of-course test, and administrators were also concerned at the time about the number of students in online courses. On March 20th, because of lingering unanswered questions, I directed Assistant Director of Schools to start an investigation on how this happened and what came to be this situation. Assistant Director of Schools looked at the student in issue and skyward account and saw that the student was placed at Clint River Community School shortly before he graduated in December 2015, 2023. It was also then discovered that same student somehow earned five credits in only eight days immediately after returning to Clinton High School. The student only showed 26 credits in total. After the information was relayed to me, I then called Attorney Chris McCarty for advice on how to proceed. Due to now knowing at least one student showed serious credit irregularities, Mr. McCarty recommended that we self-support the situation to the Tennessee Department of Education while also seeking their input and guidance. We did that. We talked with Assistant Commissioner Sam Pearson. Because grades and the record tampering can also be, at times, criminal, Chris McCarty also advised us to report the situation to Director of Attorney, District Attorney Office, for further consideration in this investigation. On March 25th, 2024, in fact, Chris McCarty contacted Chris DeBilerd, the Tennessee Department of Education General Counsel, and she recommended making the report to the Deputy Commissioner, Sam Pearson. I also contacted the Anderson County Board of Chairman, Scott Gillenwaters, and informed him about the situation and the school system's ongoing investigation. On March 26th, I asked administration, including Greg Deal, Susie Schmidt, to look into all schedules and transcripts of senior students at both Clinton High School and Anderson County High School to see if they saw or found any other concerns or irregularities with students, credits, and grade. Administration also worked with Mr. McCarty to help think through and determine what the possibility to look for and where and when conducting these interviews. On April 2nd, 2024, Greg Deal and Susie Schmidt and Kim Tao and Andrew Russell finished looking through and reviewing transcripts of all students and submitted a report to me. That information was part of the report, an update prepared for and soon submitted to the Department of Education. On April 11th, I entered into an executive session with the board and presented the information to board members on the ongoing situation and investigation of Clinton High School. On April the 12th, the administration and Chris McCarty updated Deputy Commissioner Pearson on what we had found. On April the 12th, I met with Principal Dan Jenkins and former credit recovery teacher Rachel Jones. Before the meeting, I had prepared and signed a suspension pending further investigation letters for both Mr. Jenkins and Ms. Jones. When faced with the suspension, Mr. Jenkins instead chose to resign. Ms. Jones accepted her suspension. On April 12th, I and the Board Attorney, Elizabeth Burrow, met with Anderson County District Attorney, Dave Clark, to inform him about the situation at CHS and asked him and asked if he would like to order a further investigation into the same. On April 19th, 2024, after Mr. Clark ordered the investigation open, I, along with Mr. Deal, met with Detectives of Anderson County Sheriff's Office. On May 2nd, 2024, after being provided clearance with the Sheriff's Department to proceed, Assistant Director Greg Deal and Secondary Director Susie Schmidt began interviewing Clinton High School staff as part of this ongoing investigation. On May 13th, I presented a proposal for dismissal charges for Rachel Jones and Clay Turpin in the Anderson County Board of Education, with the board approving these charges to proceed under Tenure Act and under Tennessee Code Annotated 49-2-301. The charges spoke for themselves, and they detailed multiple grounds to warrant Ms. Rachel Jones and Clay Turpin's dismissal. On May 14th, 2024, I met with Clay Turpin and Rachel Jones and provided them with the copies of the charges related to the documentation, including the Tennessee Department of Memorandy summarizing their due process rights. On May 15th, both Mr. Turpin and Ms. Jones submitted their letters of resignation. At about the same time, administration also scheduled and took part in meetings with CHS students and guardians. As a result, administration effort, as well as the efforts of those students and guardians of the 35 students that were originally identified, identified and effective, 21 completed all coursework and graduated. While 11 more students were enrolled in summer school, six of those students have since graduated, while five still remain working on the same. On May 21st, 2024, Mr. Deal and Mr. Schmidt completed their interviews with CHS staff members, and all, they interviewed 16 teachers, counselors, administrators, two parents, and were also contacted via phone by those parents, and they declined to be interviewed in person. I messed that up. Two parents were also contacted via phone, as they had declined to be interviewed in person. On May 21st, 2024, I, along with Greg Deal, met with CHS employee and football coach Darrell Keith and informed him that his employment and contract would not be renewed for the 24-25 school year. On May 24th, 21st, 2024, I and Susie Schmidt met with CH counselors Morgan Bradley, Meredith Brown, and Brittany Sweet, and also advised them of non-renewal letters. Carrie Jenkins, at that time, was a tenured teacher, was placed on suspension without pay pending the outcome of the corresponding sheriff's office investigation. On May 22nd, 2024, Greg Deal and Susie Schmidt met with me and informed me that they had completed their investigation and that they had worked with Chris McCarty's office towards ensuring the necessary steps had been taken. On May 29th, 2024, administration has submitted an updated plan of correction to the Tennessee Department of Education, Tennessee Department of Ed, Deputy Commissioner Pearson, and General Counselor. Counselor Christie Beller. On June 24th, 2024, Carrie Jenkins submitted her letter of resignation as a tenured employee. As of July the 8th, we still have these students that are working on getting their high school diploma. Like I said, five more are still working on those. In closing, it should be further noted that the player that was deemed ineligible did not ultimately affect any employment decisions, and both Greg Deal and Robbie Harold are working hard as we speak to try to get that TWSAA ruling reversed. This was always bigger than one ineligible player, and quite frankly, it was always bigger than sports. This was about grade, graduation requirements, student, student transcripts, grade modification, and more. As I want to continue to stress through this, Clinton High School is a great school with a rich history and a lot of pride. It is also filled with amazing students, outstanding teachers, and wonderful staff members. Mr. Robbie Harold, the new principal at CHS, is a graduate of Clinton High School and longtime principal of Anderson County Career and Technical School. Mr. Harold has hit the ground running with hiring a new athletic director, Josh Free, and a new, and new counselors. One of them is Melissa Fay, who was previously a counselor at Clinton High School before being Assistant Principal at Norwood Middle School for the last three years. There has not in any way been a mass exit of teachers that people have alluded to. However, we still do need a math teacher. I hope this clearly, I hope this finally clears up a lot of misinformation. I also hope as a community that we will stand behind Mr. Harold and his staff and his students as they focus on every student, every day. Thank you, and go Dragons.
Thank you, Dr. Perrott. Anything else to report to us tonight?
Other than, we will be having our custodial luncheon on Friday. They're doing amazing jobs. Our schools are in fantastic shape, and they have worked hard all summer, and we have professional development with them to go over all the new rules and regulations, and we feed them a lunch on that day. And so, please be coming part of that. The other thing is, we are setting a date, I'm working with the principal at Claxton to set a date for the community meeting. We're going to try to do it in July. We hope that we have, as you all talked about the, the school, there's a couple of things about bleachers and some other things with that. We would hope that we get that done and have that ready to come back and do a final completion in August and ready to start, getting ready to fund that. And, and I think that's the thing too, that, that the public needs to know is, we're, through our budget, we're going to be able to completely fund this school with also a sale of some property there where the old school is and not have to raise taxes. And that's, that's a big deal because we're looking at that school a little more than $25 million. That's all I have.
All right. We did meet in workshop Monday night, but everything we did is now under the action items, so we'll move on to action items. The first item is the financial report.
Okay. The financial report tonight is all the federal grants that we appropriate this time. These have already been approved in the budget, but now we need to appropriate them, and they are all Title 1A, 2A, 2B, Perkins Basic, a Perkins Reserve Act, IDEA, preschool, SRR 3.0 carryover, professional development funds, and appropriate volunteer pre-K. And there is one more that is the appropriation Stronger Community Carryover Grant, and I would ask that you approve 1A through 1M.
All right. So move, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to approve appropriations 1A through 1M. Is there any discussion? If not, roll call vote.
Mr. Bell?
Aye.
Mr. Burrow?
Aye.
Uh, Mr. Gillon Waters?
Aye.
Ms. Langenberg?
Aye.
Uh, Mr. McCamy?
Aye.
Ms. Portwood?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Of course she cares. There is no transfers.
That's right. All right. Next item is the federal programs budget. This is the, yeah, these are, these are all of our budgets that we've already, already allocated. We need to approve these with approval to make appropriate changes, amendments, and addendums for the duration of fiscal year 2025. So I need a motion to approve those with that, with the inclusion of that statement. Approval to make appropriate changes, amendments, and addendums for the duration of fiscal year.
I'll make a motion that we approve the federal programs budget for the fiscal year 2025.
Second.
Motion and a second. Is there discussion? Not all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. That is done. The next item is the Norwood Middle School greenhouse request. That is going to be funded by a CTE grant to purchase a greenhouse, to be put on the backside of the building. They'll be learning to grow some plants and sell them, so learning gardening as well as marketing and business. And that's of no, no cost to the school system. Is there a motion that we give them to go ahead for that?
So move.
Project.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Not all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. The next item is the Dutch Valley Playground Request. They are going to, they're planning to raise $50,000 to build a playground there at that school. Again, that's going to be private contributions and donations. Is there a motion to allow them to move forward with this project?
So move.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Not all.
This playground, is it going to be in the front of the?
Yeah, it'd be in the front. I think what they're planning is maybe to take one of the other ones and out that's older and do that, so.
All right. Any other discussion? Not all in favor, say aye. Aye. Oppose, no. That's done. Next item is appeals to and appearing before the Board procedure. All we've done here is, is simply make that, and I made reference to that in my remarks. We've made that a little more prominent on our website, so, so you can find it. We don't need to take action on that.
Do you need a motion on?
I do not. It's not a change in policy.
No, it's a change.
Just, just how we communicate it. Item F is the Anderson County Schools Visitor Code of Conduct Procedure. This is a...
A new state law?
Yeah, it's a law that we have to post these rules of conduct at all the schools as well as the sport venues. So those signs have been made and will be posted as soon as practical. So there are fourteen, fifteen items there that hopefully people will abide by, so. And that's law. We have to do that. We don't need to approve that either, do we?
Nope.
Okay. The next item is the High School Athletic Director Supplement.
I was, I'm requesting that we add a high school athletic supplement to the high school coaches for the Level 3 supplement. This will put the high school supplement in line with the middle school supplement. We have so many sports anymore that our, our, they work all year long, and, and they really oversee, when you look at the high schools, they oversee almost a half million dollar budget a year. And so, I'm asking that we would do this, and we do have this in our budget.
Right.
Also move?
Second.
There's a motion and a second to approve the supplement changes for high school. Any discussion? Not all in favor, say aye. Aye. Oppose, no. The next item is policies for first reading. We went through these ad nauseam Monday night and asked some questions, but we do need to go over those, so. Ms. Williams, are you going to handle those tonight?
Well, we, like you said, we went over these in depth Monday night, and after a committee had met on these, and then we presented to the full Board, and they recommended that we vote on it tonight. We had one change that was in the zero tolerance, that we added one line in that one. Other than that, uh, we felt good to recommend it as first reading.
Right. Okay. All right. Any discussions?
Do them as a group?
We'll do them as a group, yeah. Do I motion that we approve?
We discussed them in depth.
So we did.
Second.
Policies A through L on first reading. Thank you, Mr. Bell. Is there a second?
Second.
All right. Any discussion? Not all in favor, say aye. Aye. Oppose, no. That is done. The next item is just approving the DHA Committee recommendations. It's the exact same committee we had last year. Paula Sellers is the chair, Kelly Myers, Kim Tau, Susie Schmidt, Katrina Oakley, Andrew Russell, and Wade Haney, if you would approve those to be on the DHS Committee. I need a motion.
So move.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve those members of the DHA Committee. Any discussion? Not all in favor, say aye. Aye. Oppose, no. All right. That brings us...
Mr. Chairman, I would add that we have about a half a dozen more policies that we'll try to get to.
Next month. The bills, you, you, when we go to the Law Institute next week, I think the one they sent me had twenty-five pages on it.
Yeah, yeah. Legislature has made some changes for this year, so.
Yep.
All right. All right. Any other items to come before the Board tonight?
Executive session's going to begin after this.
Okay. All right. Yeah, we want to adjourn then. We forgot to request then to go into executive session. This is when the Board speaks with our attorney. We do that in private. It's the one time we do meet without the public, so we would ask you to clear this room. We'll turn off the television. We will come back into session after session, after our executive session, so if you want to stick around, you can do that, and if there's any action that comes from our executive session, we'll do it when we come back into session. So, we'll take a short recess and gather back here in five minutes. we'll take a short recess and gather back here in five minutes.
All right, let me bring us back to order. Is there any other business to come before the board tonight? Not all entertain a motion to adjourn.
No adjourn.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. We are adjourned.